The Dare County Planning Board meeting for Monday, July 13 will come to order. Please let the minutes reflect that members Finelli, Barr, Gore, Hines, and Shelton are present, and at this time Beth Midget and David Overton are absent. Everybody should have gotten a copy of the minutes from the previous meeting. I just had one small change on page 11. The third paragraph down in the first sentence. Actually, the second sentence. "The board discussed cabin size requirements. The current TTPO should have draft after that." The current TTPO draft limits the size to 400 square feet, and that was the only change I had. Do any other members have other amendments to the minutes?
Motion to approve as amended.
Second. We have a motion by Terry Gore, a second by Michael Barr. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimous. This is the time in the meeting for public comment. Besides the emails that we have in front of us, are there any other comments?
Um, let's see. I've got an email from John Robbins here saying that he needs the pen for the meeting. It will not let me log in, and I don't know how to respond to that if it's the login. I have an email from a gentleman who wants to listen to the meeting. Is it not live streaming? Yeah, it's live on YouTube. Okay, so I just need the perm in YouTube. Okay. Let me respond to this. I thought I had told him this.
Okay, while we're waiting for that, just for the record, we'll state that we did receive email comments from Joe Thompson and email comments from John Robbins. Everybody should have a copy of those in front of you.
He just, he'll figure it out. Okay, are you ready? That's the only, that's the only email that I have as of right now besides those ones that I made a copy of for you guys.
Okay, well, let us know when something, if something else comes in.
If something else comes in, I certainly will.
Okay. We have nothing under old business or new business. Under other business, it's a continued discussion of the travel trailer park ordinance. So, Don, you want to start us off on that?
Yes, sir, I'll be glad to. And you'll see at your seats, I've put another revised copy of the ordinance there with the latest changes that I made today in red. This is based on some comments that, conversations that Chairman Finelli and I had Friday afternoon and this morning in response to some conversations that I had with Mr. Joe Thompson, who sent in email comments, and some comments that we had received last month from John Robbins, who also sent in comments again today. So, I'm just going to go through them briefly, and you'll also see that there is a copy of the comments that Chairman Finelli sent me this morning. And some of what he put in his comments, I have incorporated into this. Mr. Robbins' comments and Mr. Thompson's comments were not received in time when I was working on this again today, but we will be discussing those as we go through the meeting tonight. So, I'm just going to move forward on this. Feel free to stop me with any questions or comments as we go along. You'll see, again, and we're using the copy that has the red text, not the copy that was mailed out earlier this week, or earlier last week. There in 160.02, under applicability, I think the change there will be where travel trailer parks and campgrounds are authorized according to the Dare County zoning ordinance. That seems to read better. You'll see under travel trailer park and campground, I've added a sentence there at the end of that definition that says, "Parks may be comprised of a mix of travel trailers, camping cabins, alternative camping units, and camping tents." That's just a clarification to make it read better and understood that you can have a campground, and it can be all travel trailers or RVs, or it can be a mix of the various camping units that we'll be talking about. Further down on the page, under camping cabin, last month, we had talked about the 400 square feet of area, and that has been stricken from that definition, and I have included other standards further in the ordinance that talks about the size limit. So, when we get to those, I will discuss that. I have, under alternative camping unit, Chairman Finelli pointed out that I've spelled yurts incorrectly, so I have fixed that in the last sentence. I've also included the statement that says, "Alternative camping units may or may not include restroom and kitchen facilities." And then you'll see that, based on our conver, on some of our conversation from last month and comments, that where it speaks to the tenancy of the units, and I had previously written shall not, shall be occupied by the same or same person for no more than 30 consecutive days. I have deleted that language just because it seemed like it would be an enforcement issue, and that I feel that the language is strong enough with it just saying that shall not be used as temporary quarters or permanent living. Again, you guys can give me feedback on that, but I have made that change in all of the definitions and anywhere else that it appears in the ordinance. Again, in camping tent, you'll notice that I did keep the language under the camping tent for the 30 days, just because I thought that that was significant to have it in there, that you can't stay in a tent for more than 30 days, and we can probably enforce that pretty easily. Not that anybody's going to be living in a tent for 30 days, but you just never know. Based on our discussions last month, we talked a lot about the square footage and what's enclosed and what's unenclosed, and so I added definitions of an enclosed area and an unenclosed area. The enclosed area is based on, loosely on the definition that we have in the floodplain, flood prevention ordinance for enclosure. You'll see under the unenclosed area, that's a little bit lengthier definition, and I included some exclusions in there. And then I referenced insect screening and the fact that you can have insect screening in an unenclosed area, but you can't have windows or glass coverings. You have a porch that gets screened in, that's all fine and well, but if you got to put windows in it or glass in it, then the next thing you know, it's going to be heated space. But I thought it was important that we include that in there, and you guys can certainly comment on the appropriateness of those definitions.
Yeah, let's just take a pause there and see. Does anybody have any comments, or would you like a definition clarified a little bit better? Suggestions?
I'm good with it so far.
I'm satisfied so far at all.
Okay, we spent a little bit of time on this last meeting, so I think we're in pretty good shape there.
Okay, very good. So, one of the, moving on to the preliminary approval and how the parks get approved, today, if you submitted a travel trailer park site plan, it comes to the planning board, it's reviewed, and then you install the improvements, and then it comes back unless it's a conditional use permit, and then it goes through the conditional use permit process. And that's all set out in the zoning ordinance where those districts list whether the campground is a permitted use or a conditional use, but that's not necessarily spelled out in the travel trailer park ordinance. And so Chairman Finelli had suggested that we include that in there. And so I've made that change there under 160.15. Under A, I've added that language that just says basically what I just said, that it shall be reviewed by the planning board unless the zoning ordinance specifies that it shall be a conditional use permit, and then it goes through the process. Let's see where our other changes pick up.
I'm sorry, Don, excuse me.
Yes, sir.
So, staff, there are no circumstances where staff could simply approve this?
Um, not the way that the ordinance is currently written. And the other change that Chairman Finelli recommended, and I'll get to this when we get further in the ordinance where the procedures are, is now when we do subdivisions, you guys get the preliminary plat, you approve it, and then I approve the final plat as the subdivision administrator. And what he is recommending is that for those subdivision, for site plans for travel trailer parks, that we use those same procedures.
That would seem much more logical.
Because there's really no, because I can do the same thing and look at a final plat and say, "Yeah, you guys have met all the conditions, and the improvements are installed the way that they were approved," and that there's no need to send it back to you guys. It's just an unnecessary burden. And so if that's satisfactory for a subdivision, it should be satisfactory for this.
I concur, but we'll get to it when we get to it.
Yes, yes. And what I, what my thought was is just replicate that same approval process that's spelled out in the subdivision ordinance and put it in this ordinance. I just didn't have time to write it into the, into the draft today when I was making these changes, and I apologize for that, but as Buddy said earlier, we're very busy. We were very busy today, and so I just didn't have a chance to make that in there.
Sorry, go ahead.
No, that's fine. And then on page three, under item 17, it says, "Proposed lot lines," and I've changed that to camp sites, "and approximate dimensions." We need to strike approximate there. I don't know why that's in there. Chairman Finelli pointed that out to me, and I hadn't picked up on that, but that does seem kind of, we need to know the specific dimensions, not the approximate dimensions. You'll see there on page five, where I've changed C and the review by other agencies, and I've just changed that language a little bit. And then once we, you know, with the, if the board, if it's the consensus of the board that we change the procedures to the staff level review for the final plat, I will make those changes. And I've noted that at the top of page six, changed the review as subdivisions.
Do we want to take a second to talk about that? Because I'm, I'm highly in favor of that for what it's worth. I think that it would be a much more effective way of getting things done, and it seems to have worked incredibly well with the subdivisions. So, just while we're on it, I wanted to make that comment that it would give both a more expeditious route to getting things done, but I also think it would be a better quality system as far as having somebody review the final, having us set the initial parameters, but having you review the final parameters to make sure that everything's in accordance.
Right, and then if there's anything that staff is uncomfortable with, we can always write the language so that, again, if there's something that, that, that needs additional, an issue has arisen during the time that the preliminary plat was approved, that staff can always bring it back to the planning board for final plat approval if necessary.
I definitely think it streamlines the process.
There's no doubt about that, yeah. Comments, guys? Anything? No?
I'm good.
Okay. Okay, so we'll keep moving right along. Under the general standards, okay, on page eight, on 160.21, you see I have that language in red, and that was in red last month, and I just forgot to ask Mr. Barr about this because that language is very specific, and it seems like it's more specific to the subdivision ordinance than the travel trailer park ordinance where it talks about the boundaries of the lots. Is that, is that needed for a travel trailer park?
Surely it doesn't hurt anything.
Okay. So, I'm just going to put in there that it's okay to leave in there. So, the comments that I've been getting from Joe Thompson are indicating that the way that the draft references this two acre minimum and includes wastewater areas and all of the other common areas, that he felt that that was, that it was going to exclude a lot of properties that were potential to be developed for campgrounds. And my response to that was, I'm very comfortable with the two acre minimum, and I think we need to keep the two acre minimum in there, or a minimum of some sort, probably not any less than two acres. Maybe we can work on what we're excluding or what we're including in that two acre minimum, but the idea is, is that we don't have a property owner coming up and wanting to put four or five RV sites in their backyard, or have someone camping in their backyard. And so you have the two acre minimum that's going to preclude that, because we get this question a lot. Well, can I park a camp, RV on my, on my lot? No, no, you can't do that. Well, what if I call it a campground? No, you can't call it a campground because it's not two acres. And so we get that question a lot. So, I think the two acre minimum is important. I'm comfortable if we can exclude the septic systems and the wastewater, but I think if we keep the requirement in there that you have to have a bath house to have a campground, that that's also going to serve as a governor for enforcement purposes and to keep those pop-up RV parks in somebody's backyard, because I know, you know, that you may not think that it's an enforcement issue, but we have enforcement issues with RVs. It's our number one enforcement issue. And so I don't want to, in our endeavors to try to update our travel trailer park ordinance, do something that's going to create more problems for us. And so whatever you guys want to tell me and any feedback on that, you'll see that I did put some language in there in red that just says, "All parks shall contain at least two acres of area to be used for the location of camping sites. This two acre minimum shall exclude coastal or freshwater wetland areas, roads, bath houses, amenity structures, and amenity areas. A park may be located on a site with other commercial uses but shall be separated from other commercial uses by a buffer as set forth in section 160.22 P and P, which is the buffer language in the ordinance, and shall contain a minimum of 20 camp sites." So, if you have a mixed-use commercial site, you don't necessarily have to meet that minimum for the campground area if you can get the 20 sites and have a bath house. So, and I've got some other language in there that talks about the mixed-use sites. And I may be completely off the mark here, but I really think that it's from a, from an enforcement issue that we have to have some minimum in there, and you guys just need to tell me what needs to be included and what needs to be excluded. And some of this is, over the course of the past probably 15 years when we've done a couple of campgrounds, we've struggled with that two acre minimum and what to include because that current language now that just reads, "The two acre minimum shall exclude roads, common areas, and the like," you know, we've always struggled with what does "and the like" mean. And so my original intent was to clarify that language, but we want to make sure that we get the language right. So, you got, you guys tell me what you think about the two acre minimum.
I think I like the two acre minimum first.
Okay. And what do you think needs to be excluded or included?
I'm fine with the way you've got it written.
I have a question and a comment.
Okay.
My question would be, what is it that makes two acres optimal as opposed to another size? I mean, is it just the logic of, there's a lot of people that may have a little over an acre in certain places, like, say, Stumpy Point, but, you know, you don't want to make it too restrictive by saying it has to be five. So, it just seems to be where the number falls.
I don't know what the magic number is for that. I will tell you that the two acre minimum has been in the ordinance since it was originally adopted way back when. And so at some point, they must have decided that two acres was appropriate.
Yeah, I mean, it makes logical sense to me just because I can see someone having slightly over an acre lot and that not being completely in ordinary, and I wouldn't want it to be too prohibitive by saying, "Oh, you have to have three and a half acres because land is sparse around here."
Right, well.
So, I mean, it makes sense. I was just wondering if there was something more to it than just kind of the...
I don't think we need to go higher than two acres just from the non-conforming aspect of the campgrounds that we have out there now. We don't want to render anyone non-conforming that may have come in under the other ordinance, but I just, I don't know if, if it's been in there for 20 years or almost three decades, then I don't know how appropriate it is or how prudent it is to decrease it.
I don't disagree. I was just wondering for my own edification, kind of where we came up with that number. The second comment I'd like to make is I think the most paramount thing to include would be the bath house, because I think that, one, that's going to create a financial investment on the part of the developer, and, two, it sets a tone of professionalism within this realm. That is, you know, if someone wants to start a camp or RV-type site, are they willing to put the upfront investment, and are they trying to seek the type of folks that are looking for something with a bath house? Because I do think there is a discernment there. So, that would be the one thing that I would want included, and other than that, I'll...
And in line with that, you know, I, I read Joe Thompson's comments, and he tends to say, "Well, you know, maybe we don't need any of those kind of amenities." But to me, that's what makes the park appealing to people to come and stay in, is to have a bath house, to have amenities of some type, whatever it might be, rather than just having a parking lot.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, that's kind of, in my mind, what discerns an actual designated campsite from just an open lot where we can park RVs. And, yeah.
I, I agree with you.
Yeah.
There, there needs to be some accountability, and I think the bath house is, is that step toward accountability instead of just being somebody's backyard with some RV hookups.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's, that's getting into a pretty good, good-sized parcel. Two acres of strictly camp sites, excluding everything else. So, what are we talking about? Three acres, maybe?
I, I think three, three and a half, maybe, yeah. And I think it all depends on, so, the way that the ordinance is written now, you have to have two acres for the campsite, and everything else is excluded. You have to have an internal access road to, to access the campsite. You can't have NC-12 in a two-acre parcel, and then they pull in with the RVs. And so you have to have an area of roadway, too, and so that's going to take up some of the land as well, and then you have to have septic. And so, yeah, probably by the time you have the camp sites and the roads and all, it's probably bumping into three and a half or four acres, yeah, so...
Because, again, the roads and the other infrastructure aren't counted as part of that two acres.
And so do, do we want to include that as the two acres or no? You, I want to make sure I understand. You, I, I wanna make sure I understand what you guys are telling me.
I, I just had a quick comment. So do, do you put a minimum size to the bath house? If somebody's still gonna stick a six-by-six in the ground and throw out a...
Well, that's dictated by the number of campsites that you have. Remember, we talked last month about the number of fixtures that you have tied to 20 camp sites. But then, you know, you'll see the comments that we got from John Robbins. He says, well, if you're not, if you're having camper cabins, thank you. If you're having camper cabins or eco tents, then you don't need to have a bath house because they have their own internal restroom facilities in the house. And I, I don't necessarily agree with that. I think it's getting back to that accountability and that, that, that distinction between somebody having RVs in their backyard and somebody having a bona fide campground. And that's just, just me.
I don't have a problem with the two-acre minimum allowing the, you know, taking that two acres and say, okay, you know, that includes the camp sites, that includes access. And if you've got enough room to put septic on there, that's fine, too. Rather than saying you've got a two-acre minimum, but, but it's really not a two-acre minimum.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm kinda with it.
It's just, we're saying two acres, but then we're qualifying that with the exclusion. So is that what we wanna do? Do we just want to say two acres and leave it at that?
Two acres minimum and let them, let them put what they can? I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I would be in agreement, just saying two acres and just leaving it at that.
And then with the other provisions of the ordinance saying, okay, you've got two acres, but you have to have internal roads and you have to have a bath house and you have to have all that on the two acres, that in and of itself is gonna limit it.
Yeah, and I think the exclusion for wetlands, that probably should stay in there.
I think that should stay in there.
But I think, I think other than that, I think it'll just be two acres. And if they can make it work with two acres and comply with all the other regulations, hey, more power to them.
Yeah, I, I agree with Mr. Barr on this. I think it's incumbent upon the developer to lay out their tract and figure out exactly how they're gonna make it work. We're just simply trying to avoid the backyard campground, which I think two acres more than does, without getting too granular into what that does and doesn't include. Personal opinion.
When you have 1,500-square-foot sites, that enables you to put 29 sites on an acre. So a two-acre campsite, strictly campsite, that's a minimum of 58 parking spaces. So that gives you an idea. So if you, or if this group thinks that maybe we just say two acres and, and not exclude things, then you're coming down off of 58 potential sites down to 30 to 40 or something, maybe. So that just gives you an idea of maybe how big a park would be if you just say a two ac, two-acre minimum.
And that's a good-sized park.
Yeah.
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 And I, I don't think it's our responsibility to design it. It's our responsibility to set some place to start.
Yeah.
And their responsibility to design and make it work. How are they gonna make it work? If they can't make it work with two acres, then they have to find a bigger site and, and go to that route.
Well, and I think the other thing to keep in mind is, is that we're applying a two-acre minimum to campgrounds that we don't necessarily apply to any other commercial uses. And so, um, that in and of itself may, you know, if, if we, if we rewrite it and take those exclusions out so that it is more of an accurate two acres instead of a two acres plus everything being excluded, that may be leveling the playing fields for the campgrounds and not, because we don't have a minimum lot size for other commercial uses except for maybe in the I-1 industrial where it says it's 40,000 square feet. So that's, that's just a thought. So my notes are reflecting that you guys are two acres minimum and the only thing that we want to exclude is freshwater and coastal wetlands.
Yes.
Yes?
Does that seem to be the opinion?
I think so.
I'm fine with that, too. Because I looked at about 20 different zoning ordinances on travel trailer parks. Every one of them had a minimum size. They were running like from an acre to five acres, but it was just a flat number. They didn't get into exclusions. Now Kitty Hawk, though, has a very small size. And Kitty Hawk just has a minimum of 10 spaces required for a travel trailer park. 2,000-square-foot spaces. Okay, then we're in agreement that we're gonna go with a two-acre minimum. That's all-inclusive.
Yes, sir.
Except for the wetlands. Okay?
Let me, let me look through the other comments that I've got here now.
I just have one more question.
Okay.
So, what would prevent somebody from doing wastewater, like a pumping station where they can just take it off-site?
Um, I'm not sure. I think it would be the way that we drafted it in the ordinance, and it might come down to the health department whether they will allow that, and I'm not sure.
Well, it's been done countless places where you have a, a development that maybe's got a lot of wetlands on it, and somebody goes in there and creates a bunch of lots. They've got some good area over here, and they go put septic systems in. They're all individual septic systems, but they're, they're all for the, however many lots they got, they're right there. So you theoretically could have a pumping station that pumped it off-site if you had another site that you could use for your wastewater.
I'm trying to confuse anybody, I was just...
What are you envisioning? I mean, what, what's your...
Just wanted to make sure that, you know, again, it was kinda, if someone's gonna do it, they're gonna take the time to do it, right?
And further in here, there's some language that we're gonna talk about pumping stations and dump, and pump-out stations. And it's just, we, we need to get further to that in the ordinance, okay? So I'm just trying to make sure that I follow everything that the chairman and I talked about today as well as the comments that we got.
Back to this two-acre minimum thing.
Yes, sir.
In that paragraph there at the very bottom of page eight, uh, where it starts talking about commercial uses and a mix, the way this is written, you saying somebody can, they still have to have within that space a well-defined two acres.
No, that's not what my intent was. And if I need to say that differently, then I need to say that differently.
Yeah, I certainly think it should be in a separate paragraph.
Okay. What I'm saying is, and what my intent is, is that if you have a commercial parcel and you have excess land on that commercial parcel, which you want to try to develop a campground on, that you could have your restaurant, for lack of, um, this is just an example, your restaurant here, and then you could have your camp sites over here, but you'd have to have a minimum of 20 camp sites. You'd have to have that defined by the buffer standard just set in the ordinance, and you'd have to have a bath house. And I, I think I say that somewhere further in here. Again, I was struggling with trying to get this all in there for tonight's discussion. It needs to be formatted a little bit better. But that was what my thought was, is that it's okay if you want to have a campground as part of a mixed-use development, but it needs to be separate and not a commercial site with five sites here, five sites here, five sites here and five sites here. They need to be 20 here.
Right.
Does that make sense to you?
Needs to be aggregated into a central location.
Where you might have a circumstance where, as long as they had two acres that they were actually dedicating to the purpose of having a campground, there might could be some shared roadway, you know, as long as they still had that two acre. And they could define two acres for specifically the camp sites.
Now, do you mean like an easement or...?
Well, I mean, she was saying if you had a commercial use and maybe you've got a restaurant over here and a campsite over here. Rather than having maybe two entrance roads off of NC-12, you might would put one road in.
Right.
That would serve both uses.
Well, can we, can we? I'm asking this, can we go off of one of these emails and use that as an example? Or is that, we should maybe not do that?
Well, no, that's fine. I mean, that's the purpose of getting public comment.
Okay, well, Mr. Thompson's...
To make sure we're on the right track, yeah.
Site that he has with the pier, the restaurant and all that. Let's, let's use that in our mind. Everybody familiar with it somewhat?
Yes, sir, yeah.
I mean, think about that. I guess what we're trying to do would be to, to set on one side, so to speak, 20 camp sites, a minimum of 20 camp sites.
In the middle, yeah.
In the middle or wherever it may be located on, on his lot. But then, I know we haven't got to it and talked about it yet, but I think, I think on that site, he has bathroom facilities.
I say that further in here, that your bathroom facilities on a mixed-use site have to be dedicated solely to the bath, to the campground and not any other uses that... Now, that may not be right, that may not, that may be wrong, but I don't wanna get into a circumstance where we don't address the bath house on a mixed-use development and then somebody comes in and says, well, I, I got, I got restrooms in my restaurant. Can I just use those to, to meet my fixtures? No, because you gotta have a shower. Bathhouses have a shower. And so, um, in that instance, I don't know if, if he has a beach access that he also owns. And so is that appropriate to mix those two? I don't know. I know that we have to try to write our ordinance to be universal and not site-specific, though.
Well, I would say as long as, as long as he could provide two acres for 20 camp sites, uh, and he could show how that fits together and makes that 20 acres along with the restroom and facility, that, yeah, he could do it. But if you can't do that, you know...
See, I think this proposal does away with the, the two-acre minimum.
If it's a mixed use, it's, you have to have 20 sites. So that's what you guys need to tell me. So does that two-acre minimum still apply to the mixed-use site as long as you have 20 sites? If you can get 20 camp sites, but it's still not two acres, is that okay? Or do you have to have two acres?
I personally think you ought to have two acres. Now, as I said, I think you could do that with shared driveways. I mean, maybe you put the whole driveway on the campsite, but the other people are using the driveway, too. I don't care, but I still think you ought to have two acres that's actually dedicated to the campsite.
Excluding freshwater and coastal wetlands.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, I'm gonna concur with that. And I also think that the bath house would need to be designated as being exclusively for the use of the campsite.
That's a good point.
Yeah, because it needs, now, that doesn't mean that somebody can't come and use it, but the purpose, the intent behind it...
Someone coming off the beach and taking showers.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. The intent behind it needs to be, and I understand we can't, you know, qualify intent, but by any reasonable measure, the intent behind the bath house needs to be to service the campsite. Otherwise, it just becomes a public restroom.
Right. Okay. Okay, so my notes are, take out the 20 sites and apply the two acres so that it's two acres of camping area internal to a mixed-use development, separated by a buffer, not necessarily divided out as a separate parcel, but separated out by, by the buffer.
I think it needs to be bifurcated in some way and noted as this is the campsite area.
That's where the, that's where the site plan would come in, yeah.
I mean, I could see somebody drawing up plans. If they wanted a, a small campsite, drawing up plans that included, you know, all kinds of roads and stuff that maybe aren't part of this, just to get a two acre.
So should we say two acres of contiguous area, then?
You're gonna have to define an area that's two acres that is exclusive for your campsite. You can include roads, you can include septic, you can include the camp sites themselves.
Are you including septic from another business? See, I mean, this gets...
Yeah, see, I'm gonna say no on that.
I don't think you could include septic from another business, no.
But could the systems be tied together so you have one drain field?
As long as a certain proportion is delineated out as saying, "This is for the campsite and it does comply."
It's two acres.
Yeah.
Contiguous, contiguous area.
Yeah, I think, I think then, John, if you wanted to use the septic drain field for this, the campsite, and you wanted to use septic drain field for a restaurant, then you would have to determine how much area was needed for the campsite that would be included in your two acres. And then the additional area, you could include it into your campsite, but it would be over and above the, the required two acres.
Yeah, you can amalgamate it into one actual drainage field, but it would have to be large enough to encompass the requirements for both independently.
Yeah, but how would you show that on the plat to get your two acres? You gonna divide the drain field in half? I mean, this gets a little weird.
That's not...
No, that's not what we're saying. What we're saying is, is that you have two acres that's for the camp sites. Doesn't, yeah, yeah. Camp sites, that's what you, that, yeah. Now, for the mixed use like that, I don't know how that, that's gonna work. I mean, I, I think we're...
I think the health department's gonna get involved in that.
Yeah, the health department's gonna be the one that does that. And I'm just, you know...
Yeah, are we getting out of our scope here?
Yeah, I mean, I think we might be overthinking this to a certain degree. Let, let me go back and it, the more we talk about this, it sounds like we need its own little special section in here that talks about campgrounds in a, in a setting that's not just exclusively a campground on the piece of property there. It's a mixed-use development. It has campgrounds in it. And so we need to handle that differently and just have our own, um, section in the ordinance for that. And it needs to be a two-acre minimum, it needs to be identified. And there, and how we treat the septic areas may be a little bit different than if it's just a site that's dedicated solely to a campground.
Yeah, I like the idea of discerning out mixed use versus just single use.
But you could have a lot of common uses. You could have, you know, walkways and stuff going to the beach.
But that's where I was going with, with Mr. Thompson's area down there. There's no need for, for anyone to have to duplicate services. If, if he, if he has it set. I'm not talking about using the restrooms in the restaurant, but I believe he's got a pool area up there that has basically a bath house attached to it. I think so. If you put campers in there, RVs, whatever it may be, they, they've got a bathroom. I mean, of course, I know they need a dump site, but they have a bathroom. Then if we require them to put in an independent bath house just for the campground, and then in his instance, he already has a bath house across the parking lot, seems kinda counterproductive. So I think the...
Yeah.
I, I mean, I understand that.
But he would, you know, there's no way we can design a camping site ordinance that's gonna fit every situation and/or necessarily Mr. Thompson's situation.
Yeah. No, I'm, I'm, I'm not talking about every situation. I'm talking about two, an independent campsite, and like Donna was just saying, and then a mixed use. I think the mixed use, we need to put a little bit more thought in it.
Yeah, we need to put some more thought into it. And I think we probably need to put more flexibility in there so that when we have that peculiar situation or particular situation where there are restrooms associated with another adjoining commercial use, and maybe that's the key, that it's adjoining.
Maybe just some conditional, conditional...
That, that there's something in there that, that gives us the flexibility to recognize that because that's not gonna replicate itself very many times.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so, um, I think we need, I, I need to go in and think some more about the mixed use and, and just try to, to dial that in about how we treat the wastewater and the shared, and the shared common areas. Because that's, that's how all mixed uses function, is they share, they share wastewater and they share parking and all. And so we need to, to make sure we have that right and have the standalone section and then have the campground section.
They're definitely independent of themselves.
Yeah. Okay, I've got those notes, then. I'll work on that.
Yeah, we definitely...
But I do think Buddy's point about redundancy is well-taken.
No, I do, I think so, too.
I mean, we'll definitely need another section in the ordinance to deal with mixed use. But I'm wondering if instead of saying a two-acre minimum on commercial property... if we do what you were suggesting, a minimum number of sites. Because again, I get back to where somebody just starts taking a plat, and they're taking, you know, walkways that somebody else was using to the beach and saying, "Well, that's not part of the campground, but other people can use them. We'll put these roads in here, other people can use them." It just makes the, the site preparation look a little weird.
It also makes the intention very convoluted.
Yeah, that's why I'm thinking, if, if we do want to go to some kind of mixed-use and not have the same rigid two-acre requirement, then perhaps just saying a minimum number of sites. Just throw, throw that out there.
How about if I write up alternatives, two alternatives, and see how the language flows once I start writing it, and then we'll talk about it some more next month, and we'll see.
Sold.
Yeah.
Okay, the only thing I, oh, my comment there is, you know, why would you penalize one person over another person just because they happen to have a mixed-use? But if they, if they've already provided the necessities that we'd, we would require at a standalone campsite, my only thing would be why duplicate it? I'm not hung up about number of sites or anything like that, because that's probably the best way to go, would be the number of sites, because if we, if we say fifteen hundred square foot of site, could apply the same numbers to mixed-use or whatever.
I agree. But I do think the most prudent way to move forward is to bifurcate out mixed-use from single-purpose use, and then have Donna draft up a couple of options, and then we can focus exclusively on that. Because I, in my mind, am just imagining this huge amalgamation of different types of commercial businesses that are all surrounded by a campsite, and there's real no clear distinctions between what's intended to be utilized for what, so.
Well, at what point does it become a mixed-use and, and, or is that mixed-use just an amenity of the campground?
Right.
What's the principal use there? Look at KOA, they have a hotel, they have a restaurant, they have other amenities there that are exclusive to campground, whereas that's different than a mixed-use of what we're just been talking about. So, we, once, I need to give that some more thought.
I agree. Good discussion.
Yeah.
And also, instead of talking about it how it's on a site with other commercial uses, maybe we can specify the zoning districts. Sometimes what's considered a commercial use might not be what we're thinking.
Yeah, getting a little more granular on that could help. Excellent suggestion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
We can still keep, we can still use that term, "other commercial uses," but maybe specify the districts, that it'll be in C2, C3, I-1.
So, that's what we just do, that's how we start the beginning of the section, and then you can just say, "In these, in these zoning districts, camp, campsites may be allowed in conjunction with other commercial uses on a property, dah, 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 dah." I'll figure something out.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Um, let's keep moving forward. Under general standards, we talked a little bit last month about, um, some of the comments that Mr. Robbins has, and I'm gonna come to those because he starts talking about the roads. But the other section here on page nine that we need to talk about is, um, in his comments last month, we talked, and we talked some about this last month, about, "Do we need to have that set size, or do we have setbacks from campsites to campsites?" And at some point, I think we decided last month that maybe fifteen feet was appropriate. There was some discussion that maybe five feet was appropriate, and there was some discussion that maybe ten feet was appropriate. And about that time, that's when our connection started going haywire, and I couldn't really hear everything that you guys were saying. And so, I got to thinking about that after the meeting, and then I thought, "Well, why are we, you know, why do we need to have these linear campgrounds if we're gonna try to update our ordinance and the form of campgrounds now is more free-flowing? Why not have that written in there and let the developer have that flexibility? It's not up to us to decide how they want to do that, but we still need to have some control over it." So, that's where this language about the fixed camping sites and the free-form campsites come in. And so, um, I've got some language in there, and then when the chairman was speaking to me this morning, he was like, "Well, it doesn't need to be campsite to campsite, it needs to be campsite to camp unit to unit so that you're measuring from this unit to this unit and not the campsite to campsite, because you're not having a campsite if it's free-flowing." And so, and we also talked about, if you have this free-flowing campsite, how do you control, how many do you have in there if you don't have fifteen hundred? And so, if you use the fifteen hundred standard as appropriate for what we've applied over the past two or three decades, why not translate that into a density that applies to the free-form? And so, that's where the thirty sites come from. That density language, that's under number two there, the free-form campsites. That's my logic for the thirty camping sites. It's the fifteen hundred on an acre ends up being twenty point, twenty-nine point oh-four, so I round it up. Um, I mean, you, you guys have the language there in front of you. You guys tell me, are you comfortable with the concept of the fixed and the free-form? Or do you just want the fixed? Or what else do you, what else do you guys think is appropriate for that?
I like the free-form, because as we've discussed earlier, you know, we need to set general guidelines, but the developer needs to have a certain amount of latitude to do their job.
Yes, that's what I think. Anybody else?
I think in that free-form area, though, maybe, are we going to exclude travel trailers in that area?
The logic behind that being?
I, I kinda think a travel trailer fits nicely on a thirty-by-fifty space.
Yeah.
And now, also, you talk about measuring it from the footprint. I was saying, not all travel trailers have the same footprint. They have rooms to jut out on all different sizes and are different dimensions. So, maintaining that fifteen foot, some size would be impossible if you had a different-sized camper configuration going to a spot.
Yeah, I always sort of envisioned the free-form campsite area as being a place for tents and cabins, eco-tents or something.
So, does the concept of the fixed and the free-form, does that need to be, that the free-form language needs to be further included in that section about the alternative camping units? And I, and I'll tell you, part of why I included this as well is in Mr. Thompson's email, and I, I don't know if he included it in his email, but in my conversations with him and his project engineer who's designing his site plan for him, they, he, he talked about different sizes of camp, of campers and RVs, and why not have a staggered tier of sites? And my comment to him was, "That's, that's kind of awkward from an administration standpoint." Okay, we're gonna say, okay, you've, we've got a site plan that shows a row of, you know, one class of RV, another smaller class of RV, and then a third class of RVs. How am I gonna know that that's what's really parking on that site? I'm not, and I don't, and I'm not gonna get into that level and micromanaging of the enforcement. And that was why, instead of going with that graduated tier and allowing some of these smaller units, I thought, "Okay, let's go with the free-form and just let them decide among themselves what type of market they're going for. Are you going for the big WAMM RVs, or are you going for the smaller, the newer ones that you see on the road now that are a throwback to the Scooby-Doo machines?"
At some point, we have to put faith in the people that are managing these as well to do what they're supposed to do.
So, if you guys tell me that you're okay with the fixed and the free-form concept, let me go in and reform that some more. Just give me a, a little bit of guidance on whether the fifteen feet is, distance is appropriate. I just need to work out the mechanics of how we measure that, and if that thirty, that density number of thirty is appropriate as well.
I'll go first. I like the fixed and the free-form. I do think the thirty density is good. I don't necessarily know that it has to be as high as fifteen feet. Those are my comments.
Michael? You have any comments, Michael?
Well, I'm not sure that the thirty is a practical number, um, since it, but I'm not, I'm not opposed to it either. If somebody can make it work, good for them.
Yeah.
Why isn't thirty practical?
Well, it's over an acre. You said it was twenty-nine something, you rounded it up.
Yes, I rounded it up. So, I can round it down, then, I can get to twenty-five. I said twenty-five, well, I tell you, I said twenty-five this morning when I was talking to Finelli, and he said, "I don't know if that's high enough." And so, I thought, "Okay, well, let's split the difference then." So, I mean.
Well, we're getting away from the fifteen hundred square foot sites, so somebody could have a thousand square foot site, which case they could end up with forty.
As long as they're meeting appropriate setback requirements and.
Do we need a density? I mean, that, that's what you guys need to tell me, or do you want me to work on it some more and just?
I think there needs to be some kind of overarching parameter, personal opinion.
I think, I'm, I'd be more inclined to, to, to look at setback between the structures or between the, the campers and providing that there's a minimum than worrying about whether it's on a thousand square feet or fifteen hundred square foot chunk. Um, there, there obviously should be some minimum. What's enough, I don't know.
I tend to agree with that, just from a safety standpoint, too.
Yes.
So, are you saying that there should be still a minimum lot size, or just?
I'm just saying, there needs to be some type of minimum separation.
Separation.
It probably needs to be some sort of minimum, if not lot size, at least dimension that says, "Okay, you know, the, the site needs to be at least thirty feet wide," and.
It says that in there, in the fixed campsite.
Right. Um.
So.
And deep enough to cover the camper and, and parking, so.
And again, without a specific example to look at, it gets incredibly difficult, but then you can't base the entire policy off of one example.
Well, I, I think we just need to step back and think that the fixed campsite and the free-form is, 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 the analogy is, is a subdivision lot versus a group development where we have fifteen thousand square feet, or we have a one-large parcel with common area, and then we allow the developer to tell us how big that footprint is gonna be that they convey, and then, and then we go from there. And so, is, and on a group development, we have twenty feet of separation.
Yeah.
From all different angles, so.
But I think that's a fixed.
Right, so they need, they need to decide what that footprint size is gonna be based on the size of camper that they want to go to, and we still apply our setback to this imaginary footprint that they're creating. But if, but if we do that, we still need to have some, I think, overall cap on that free-form, unless we just rely on the sixty percent lot coverage. But remember now, lot coverage in terms of zoning ordinance is an impervious surface, and these campsites, they may have a concrete campsite for an RV, but they're not necessarily gonna have that for an eco-tent. Uh, the lot coverage for a camper cabin will be there, because that's gonna be an impervious surface, but gravel roads aren't gonna count, so we wanna make sure that we're trying to, that we just don't leave it. It needs to be free-form, but not free-for-all, so.
Well, if, if, if we do a fixed camping site area, fifteen hundred square foot, whatever it is, that, that takes care of itself.
Yeah.
And then the free-form camp sites, if we just set a minimum between
Between that.
Ten or, I, I'd say it shouldn't be used for anything other than tents, whether they be eco-tents, yurks, yurks, whatever it may be.
Yeah. To not, to not, like, like Finelli was saying, Chairman Finelli was saying, don't let the RVs have a free-form site.
Exactly, that's, that's.
They don't lend themselves to it.
Remember, you got, you got, you got a comment from one of these, I don't know which one it is. There are a lot of smaller RVs out now that are very popular. So, if you had a free-form, they may not need a fifty, a thirty-by-fifty foot space.
And that's what Joe Thompson was saying to me, yeah, that they don't need, they don't need fifteen hundred square feet.
I think as long as the site is large enough for the unit and parking and complies with the setbacks between each of the units, then it would be okay. But they'd have to submit a plan for that.
Okay. Okay, let me, let me work on it some more, okay? I think, I think if we keep in mind the analogy of the subdivision and the group development and work off of that, we could come up with something, maybe.
If we were to allow travel trailers in the free-form area, you may have to change the setback definition and say, "It's not from the footprint, but it's from the sides of the structure," because somebody will go in there and put something in and then punch it out five feet on both sides.
It's gonna be an enforcement nightmare, though, you're not, who's gonna enforce that? Free-form. I mean, the free-form area would become unenforceable.
Yeah.
I mean, really.
Well, to the cer, no, I think, I think what we need, when we're saying free-form, I think the longer we talk about it, they're still gonna have to define something on a site plan just like we do with the group development, because we don't have, we don't approve group developments, and somebody just comes in and says, "Okay, here's a two-acre parcel, and I'm gonna put twenty houses out there." We say, "No, we have to see a footprint and show that you got that twenty feet of separation," and so.
Yeah, you can always go back and say, "Okay, give us some detail of, of the typical units that you're gonna have for these particular sites," so they can say, "Okay, we're gonna have a, a thirty-foot RV with four-foot knockout on each side, potentially, and have that in the detail and show that it'll actually fit on the parcel that they're submitting for."
Let me ask this question, then. In the free-form area, do you wanna see the sites on the plat? Or are we just telling the developer, "You got that area, just keep everything fifteen feet apart"?
I think we'd have to see something.
I think we need to see something, even if it's just something like little walkway-looking areas to individual. Just like you're talking about group housing developments, we require some type of footprint that shows how big the house is gonna be, where it's gonna sit and.
That we describe, a twenty-by-thirty footprint, yeah.
Very detailed. Now, we may not even need to do that much detail on the camping park, but definitely needs to be done so that you know that, okay, if somebody comes in there with a fifty-foot motorhome, it isn't gonna fit on one of those free-form lots.
And I think that ultimately, okay, if we say free-form and you show us that you can get however many out there, and we say, "Okay, you've showed that you can get twenty-five out there, we're gonna say you can have twenty-five campsites out there, and if you want to maneuver those pieces to fit your, your campers, then that's fine. The overall governor on that's gonna be the wastewater and how much, how, how they size the system so that even if they decide they're gonna sneak in another five or ten, they're not gonna be able to do that because of their wastewater."
And though, I know it's not easy to regulate, there still would be the setback requirements, which you can't just cram an extra five in there and.
Yeah. Well, at some point, you know, what they're telling us is, is that people are camping, and the, the rise in the popularity of camping is because people are trying to get the heck away from everybody else, so they don't wanna be right on top of everybody, and that's the idea for the free-form, so.
But when we talk, one more quick question. Maybe a little further. The free-form campsite.
Do free form campsites require no concrete rock?
No, I think that they would have to, to a certain point. But you guys are saying, maybe we don't need to allow the RVs in the free form. But then I'm hearing something different. So we're, we're all, we're all over the place. Yeah.
Well, that's, yeah, I'm, I'm, I just want to understand free form because if, if you decided to allow RVs in free form with no fixed service, surface, I can just see a lot of problems with that.
Yeah.
What did you do for this?
That's kind of why I said, you know, I think they would need to have a site plan that would. Include the things that need to be included. And that would be a pad for the particular campsite and how they're going to use it.
Well, like with these eco tents, they just go out there and build a wooden platform and plop them down on that.
Yeah, well, they can still submit a site plan to do that.
Yeah. And Buddy, if I could, my understanding of what we're looking at with fixed versus free form, with fixed, obviously we have a very clear organized system. With free form, it's my thinking, we are just simply offering a little more flexibility, not carte blanche to do what you want, but just, okay, we have these guidelines, you're free within set guidelines, which would include things like you're talking about with the ingresses and egresses and the pathways and things like that. Once you have that basic infrastructure in place, if you want to slightly augment things, we won't be as rigid as we would be under the fixed campsites. It's my understanding. And I could be completely missing the vote on this, but.
Let me work on it some more because the longer you talk about it, the more things pop into your head. So.
Right.
But what I'm getting is, is that we don't need a density. We're just going to rely on the separation of the units. And we may or may not have it just for RVs. We may, we may just have the free form for the alternative camping ones. I, I'll work on that some. So then on page 10, I've got that others, that other language in there under K where we're talking about the roads, internal roads shall be a minimum of 20 feet, which is what you guys said last month. And then I've included the language in it that says, free form camping area shall be accessed by internal access road suitable for emergency response vehicle access. And this is the other thing, you know, I, I want to make sure, and this may be where the fire code is going to come into play, Buddy, and you can answer this question probably better than I can. I don't want us to approve a campsite, and I may be overthinking this too, but you know, we're ultimately responsible for public safety and welfare and getting an emergency service vehicle out to somebody who's out there in an eco tent. And we can't have somebody in an eco tent that's down a six foot wooden walkway that's 500 feet away from an access road. And so we want to make sure that, that's where that language come in there this morning from the chairman's and I conversation. And so that may or may not be right.
I saw the comment, I don't know which one it was, talked about have the difference of having an 80 foot turnaround.
Right.
And, and a T intersection. Well, you can accomplish both things. You can accomplish what you want to accomplish with either, as long as you have a minimum standard that says if you're going to have a T, they gotta have enough front to pull the truck down, back up and turn around.
Yeah.
And I don't have a problem with that. We, we've used that often.
Now, what's the aversion to having a 12 foot wide, uh, one way street?
You know, I don't know if we talked about that last month. Again, we were getting into that point in the meeting where, where the, the, the internet was spacing out on us and when everybody couldn't hear what everybody was saying. I'm okay with a one way 12 foot road.
I, I mean, I feel like that should be put in there. I like that.
Did talk about that in the comment, I recall was one of the members said, um, it's not really suitable for backing up a trailer.
But if it was in a part of a campground that it was for an eco tent, or somebody's not trailering the vehicle or the camper cabin, then I think it would be appropriate. And so maybe that's what the language needs to say.
Two different options there. One, one to cover eco tents and that kind of things, things that are stationary and are not moving.
Well, I think we just need to say something to the effect that the planning board and the review of the site plan can authorize the use of 12 foot one way drive aisles in those situations where access is not necessarily for RVs and trailering vehicles or something to that effect.
Well, that, and I don't want to reinvent the wheel. It's my understanding, and I could be wrong, but the DMV or the DOT does approve 12 feet wide as an appropriate size for a one way street. So, I mean, if that's the case, then I.
Yeah, but they might approve it 12 feet wide for a one way street, but if it's a perpendicular angle, there's no way that a 40 foot RV is going to be able to come and maneuver and back into a space.
But somebody going to an eco tent and.
Yeah.
Yeah, it might work.
Or if you had, you know, if you happen to have slanted campsites.
Right.
You know, where they could actually maneuver. If they could, if they could provide us a detail that says, okay, this will work and this is why it'll work. Then, you know, I wouldn't have a problem with it then.
Yeah. It, it's just in my mind's eye. If, if my understanding is correct, and it could not be, that if the Department of Transportation says 12 feet wide is fine for a one way street, I don't know that we need to reinvent the wheel on that.
So I'll look into some language for the 12 feet. Um, on page 11.
Before we go there, John Robbins in his comments about roads mentioned asphalt millings or other materials. Is that something that?
I'm okay for that. I think in the flexibility of the language, I'm not a big fan of asphalt millings, but.
I don't know enough to make a comment on them.
Not my area.
Melons is pretty good. I mean, I like melons. Big pack dime is real good. It depends what you got under it.
Yeah, but if they use them, are, should they be considered a pervious or impervious surface? Can't, you can't have asphalt millings, which over time are going to pack down and become impervious and then not have that counted in your coverage. So if you want to use that, then that's fine. We don't count gravel in our coverage, but asphalt millings is exactly that. It's ground up asphalt. And when you drive over it with heavy vehicles, it's going to function differently than a gravel road. So. That's, I'll, I'll look some language in there.
Yeah. From what you said, I think if, if somebody did use them, then we should consider it as a impervious ser, I mean, yeah, as an impervious surface.
Yeah. Okay. So noted. Um, we talked a little bit last time about employee housing and allowing employee housing. And this goes back to Mr. Robbins' comments. And so there on page 11, under item T, I've changed all of that to talk about some employee housing and how you can have your camper cabins designated as employee housing. You can have a manufactured house in there for employee housing, or you can even have a detached residential structure in there for employee housing. But those units can't be larger than 1,200 square feet. The 1,200 square feet is coming from our standards that we adopted last year for the employee housing and the accessory dwelling units. And then I put language in there that travel trailers and alternative camping units, i.e. the eco tents can't be used as year round housing for employees. And so I don't know if that's appropriate. I had put in the question mark in there cap on the number of employee housing. And I think that might be something that lends itself to that site specific determination and negotiations that depend on the number of, of campsites that you have and the size of the campground.
You know, to me, that, that, that's like two separate issues. You know, if we're trying to rewrite the travel trailer park ordinance, I don't know that we, should we, should we be involved in employee housing in, in a travel trailer park?
Well, it goes back to the original language, which is right above that where it talks about you can have one mobile home in a travel trailer park that serves as the manager's site. And so the comment last time was as well, what's wrong with having your employees housed on the campsite, on the camp, in the park, and they, in the off season, stay in the camper cabins? Okay. Well, I don't have a problem with that, but we need to decide that early on so that there's not an undermining of the ordinance and the use of the property. So I don't know. You guys tell me. I can easily take that language out.
I like it.
I actually like it. You know, I think it's a good idea. The cap, you know, probably ought to be something like three for every three employees or something of that nature. Because 1,200 square feet, you're probably going to have a three bedroom house.
Absolutely. I mean, I do see Buddy's point of trying to mix issues, but if it's already there, I think this is just as simple as an update. Personal opinion.
I just made the comment earlier that I think it's something we should do during the review process or CUP review as opposed to trying to put a limit right now.
Right.
But I think it's a good thing to look at because, you know, somebody could be putting in housing that's not really park related.
That's where I was going with that.
Yeah.
You know, up to a 1,200 square foot, we don't have any, or I guess we do. I don't see it. A number of 12, how many, we're not regulating how many 1,200 square foot housing units they could put on or in a campground.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, at what point, at what point does it become something other than employee housing? That, that, that's the hazard.
A mini subdivision.
Again, that, yeah. So maybe.
As much as I do like it, would there be a problem? I mean, would it have any greater effect if we just removed that part?
About the 1,200 square feet?
Yeah.
No, I mean, we're, we're riding it right now as, as we're working on it. So.
Well, you know, having a, a, a manager, having a structure for a manager of a park, family, or, when I say family house, three bedroom house, 1,200 square foot. I mean, that, that's one thing. But when you start doing, uh, you know, 10, 1,200 square foot cabins for rent.
Well, I think, I think you can handle that at, when you do your preliminary plat review and or final plat review and requiring the campground to say how many employees they're going to have. Just like you do it on a commercial site. Typically you require parking spaces for employees and you, and then you require them for your customers. So you have to give somebody an idea of how many employees you're going to have. You just wouldn't leave it free so that they could just, as you said, continue to build 1,200 square foot houses.
I do think it's a salient point that Buddy brings up there. Yeah.
There needs to be a cap or that we don't even need to get into it. Just leave it as it is and just says that you can have a residential structure to serve as management.
I like the latter. A residential.
I think, I like the latter too. And I think the latter is, is one of the things that we are obligated to work on in the county, as with all the stuff we did last year and, and, and everything is to try to help the workforce housing.
Yeah, I'm all about helping workforce, workforce housing, but not necessarily in the campground.
Okay. Um, the other thing that we spent time on last month, talking extensively about, that's really the gist of the, of what's under 160.23 camper cabins is the size of the camper cabins. And last month, you guys said 600 square feet of enclosed area plus 100 square feet of unenclosed area. And so, you know, John Robbins is still having some issues with the size. He's suggesting 800. And why are we having a limit on the size of a deck on a camper cabin? And I think the reason that we had chosen 100 square feet of unenclosed area was because it was consistent with what's in the ordinance now in RVs. Um, I don't know if it's appropriate for a camper cabin. I don't know if it's appropriate for an eco tent. I probably think it's appropriate for an eco tent. Um, but I don't know if it is for a camper cabin. And then he has some comments in there about, does it exclude steps and whatnot? And I think I put that in there. Stairways, access ways to decks and wooden walkways shown be excluded from the 100 square feet of enclosed, unenclosed area. So you guys tell me, is 600 still, is 600 still the number that you want? Or do you want to bump that up?
Well, I think we looked at the eco tents during our meeting last time and looked at the sizes that they kind of showed. And that was a number that was close to the kind of a standard size that they had. That doesn't mean they don't have bigger ones. I don't know whether they do or not, but.
Well, they do. I mean, I've looked into this a little bit because that, that's something that I thought a lot about as a parent. And if I'm bringing both my daughters, I would, I mean, I remember at one point in my life, it was me and both my daughters in an 800 square foot condo, and that was tight. So, I mean, I could see that.
You were living there.
Yeah, but for the purpose of vacation, you'd still be there for a week or however long. So I, I could definitely see that. I also see that, you know, in doing some research, I mean, they do get much larger. So I think 800 might be a more reasonable compromise.
I don't have a problem with 800. I mean, we just picked a number out of space last week and.
Yeah, I just thought 400 was kind of small.
Yeah, 400 is like one person.
But also we are talking about camping.
That's.
You know, at some point, you rent a house.
Right. But I don't know that there's a really much, I mean, working in the vacation rental industry, I can tell you, there's not going to be much in the 800 square foot range. So, I mean, I don't think you're infringing in upon, you know, the, the rental of something, uh, single family residential properties. So I, I, I think you still have quite a few hundred square feet to go before you start to get into a major overlap there.
So instead of us focusing on a number for enclosed and unenclosed, and I don't even know if I want to say this and get this back, this whole discussion again, what if we just say a square footage, 1,000 square feet, and you break it up however you want to in the enclosed and unenclosed? Or 800 square feet and you do it however you want to? I don't know. You guys tell me what the magic number is. I don't know. All I know is, is that the bigger you get on the structure, the more likely it's going to be that it's not used in the intended fashion for seasonal rentals.
I can go with 800.
And I wouldn't want to expand the 100 square feet on the exterior because then you start, you start getting into what's the real purpose of that. I mean.
It's a 10 by 10 area for camping.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, in my opinion, it should.
Yeah. So, I mean, I like 800 with 100 uh, of unenclosed.
Okay.
So 900 total or?
900 total. And if you wanted to do 900 total and divide it however you want, it's just, yeah, I think we just need a little more space on 600 feet.
I can write that language either way.
I mean, there, that's a place to make it do. At that point, they could do a 600 square foot.
Yeah, maybe.
200.
And 200. Yeah. And if that's what works well for them, that's what works well for them.
Maybe we could, like, like we said, you know, fix it at saying, okay, your structure and, or your enclosed structure or conditioned structure and non-conditioned structure have a maximum of 900 square feet.
Gross floor area.
Yep. And then if they want to put 600 and 300.
Right. Yeah.
That's fine.
Just say 900 square feet and don't get into enclosed and unenclosed. Just go with it and let them decide.
Yep.
Sounds good to me.
That would include open decks.
Right.
That's right. It's not 900 and then you get all this other. I'm going to take out all of that superfluous language in there about, and I'm going to take out the definitions of unenclosed and enclosed. And I'm going to get into just the 900 and, and try to tack that down.
I think you still should have some language in there that says that that's including, so that there's no confusion, that that's including conditioned and unconditioned space.
And decks.
Okay.
Yes.
Decks.
And decks.
Whatever.
Or additions or whatever.
How does everybody feel about that?
I, I think that's good. And you can decide what you want to do, however you want to break it up.
Yeah.
Okay.
And you might have a tent that you want to put in there that's 600 square feet, but you'd like to have a 300 square foot deck.
Hey, I mean.
I mean, I think that's true.
Have at it. Yeah.
Good at it. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Cause if you're okay with 800 and 100. Yeah, because if you're okay with 800 and 100, then what's the difference between 600 and three? If 900 is the number that you're comfortable with, then why do we care how you mix that up?
That's what I.
You may want to mix it up and have, you know, six and threes and eight and ones. I don't know. I don't know what.
You might want to have, you know, you know, a roofed area that's open.
That's right.
With hammocks and whatever. That's cool.
So we're going to apply 900 gross square feet. Okay, I'm making my notes here, guys. Uh, then the other thing is, is trying to tie down that we talked about the 30, short-term and long-term. And I just went away from that time limit and just put in there that the ownership of camping cabins, and this is replicated in the alternative camping unit language, the ownership of camping cabins shall be retained by the park owners and shall not be individually sold and fee simple title as condominiums or for interval ownership. And that should help us with, with that. You guys are shaking your heads.
Yeah.
The only thing I'm wondering is, should we do something like we do with vacation rentals where we put a certain number of days that they're allowed to rent consecutively?
Well, that's what I thought we were trying to get away from.
Yeah, we, we had 30 in there, but we, we.
Because we.
Because of the comments that we got from other people, it was like, okay, if I want to come down here and rent a unit, a house for 60 days, 90 days, or 200 days, um, and somebody's willing to rent it to me.
Yeah, I don't.
Well, I mean, I remember Buddy saying that it would be hard for us to enforce the 30 days, and there's no doubt about that. I mean.
It's going to be hard to enforce for 60 days or six months.
Yeah.
That's what I think the size dictates, the amount of time, basically.
Yeah.
You're not going to have a three-family group come down and stay in 600 square foot highs.
Yeah.
Or whatever it may be. I'm just saying, when you get up, when you get up to 900, or, or just say 800, let's say 20 by 40, that's a big camping tent. You know, if, if, if you want to come down, I mean, this is me personally. If you want to come down and camp with your family. We're, we're almost, we're almost there to a single-family dwelling right now. We're stopping just shy of a single-family dwelling.
Well, I don't think that anybody's going to stay in one of those eco tents for longer than 30 days.
It's more so the cabin.
I'm talking about the cabin.
Yeah, it's the cabin, yeah. It's the cabin.
I'm talking about the cabin.
That's where the problem is, is it's that fine line between, is it a camper cabin for seasonal or is it?
Workforce housing.
Is it workforce housing? Or is it just a de facto subdivision that somebody's trying to pull a slick one on us, you know? And, um.
Well, maybe, maybe as a part of the site plan review process, you require the owner that's going to be running the campground to provide you a copy of their rental or lease agreement.
Oh, no, that's, that says that, that's in here now. That's in the ordinance now, and we ask for that. But again, it's the enforcement. And so what does the Vacation Rental Act say?
Anything extending beyond 30 days is no longer subject to the Vacation Rental Act. But see, from a practical standpoint, if you were to call me up and say, Terry, I want to rent one of your vacation rental houses for four months, I would clear it with the owner and then we would just simply write a different type of lease. So. But there again, nobody ever said, these are just single-family residential homes.
Yeah.
So.
And I don't think, you know, personally, I don't think that that's going to be a big issue or problem. Um.
Yeah, I'm wondering if we don't have a solution looking for a problem on this one.
Yeah.
So are you guys okay with the language that I've written now then, leaving out the 30 days and just talking about the interval ownership and the, everything needs to be retained by the park guys, park owners?
Yeah.
I know.
Yeah.
Okay, then the other question that we have, the last one to talk about is wastewater systems and water systems and sewage dumping stations and bathhouses. And who has to have that and who doesn't have to have that? Clearly, we've had some discussion leading up into this, that RV park, RVs in a campground need to have bathhouses and they need to have dumping stations, correct? Yes?
Yes, yes, yes.
But if you have all, if you have camper cabins and eco tents, do they need to have access to a bathhouse? I think the eco tents do.
I think they do.
Yeah, I think they do too. And we're right back to the same thing that I was just talking about when we were talking about size. Looking at Johnny, John Robbins' comments, if, if the park is comprised of cabin, cabins all having bath facilities, why require these duplicate facilities? So. If, if all these camping cabins that are 900 square foot have bathrooms, then.
They're not going to use a bathhouse.
Then, then, then why have that? Why have a bathhouse?
That's why they have bathrooms too. You still require them to have a bathhouse.
Yeah, but they're kind of mobile. They, they, they need somewhere to dump. But you've got a fixed cabin with a septic system or a central sewage system or whatever it may be.
But you know, are year-round travel trailer parks now, or year-round is not the right term, but where they people leave their camper there first, in a period of time, they're hooked hard to a septic tank?
Right.
But we still require them to have a bathhouse?
Oh, I'm not against, don't get me wrong, I'm not talking, I'm not against the bath eyes in itself. I, I think that's a good idea. But, but I can understand his question. Why, why have a bathhouse if it's all cabins?
Because then it's a subdivision, like Donner just said earlier, that becomes a subdivision. If you don't make them have a facility that falls in line with every other campground or park, that becomes a subdivision. You have, it's.
Well, if we're not going to regulate a number of tents versus a number of RVs, and we, we allow a campground, which this would allow with nothing but cabins at 900 square foot, what would be the purpose? Of having a bathhouse and a dumping station? That's, that's where I'm going with it. There's nothing in here to pre, precludes anybody from having a, a campground with whatever number, 900 square foot camping cabins. I can see that happening. I mean.
I, I think that, let, let's talk about how we transitioned to this, okay? So in the first, in the first draft that we talked about last month, and I don't know if we spent a great deal of time on talking about this, discussing it, I had language in there that says you can have camper cabins, you can have alternative camping units, but you can't have exclusively that. You can't have a campground of camper cabins and have the benefit of a 1,500 square foot site. We're going to tell you that you can have camper cabins, but you also have to have a little bit of this other stuff thrown in. And he commented against that. And so I thought, okay, well, let's rethink this then. Let's say that you can have a mix. But now, last month, when we were talking about that with the cap, we had a smaller size, and now we've gone up to 900 square feet that you use however you want to on these camper cabins and these eco tents. Do we need to think about back, bringing that, that cap back in, particularly if we're going to say, okay, you've got camper cabins, you don't have to have a bathhouse? We're getting right back to that number one concern that we've always talked about was, is this a campground or is it a de facto subdivision?
A small house subdivision.
Well, I think, I, I personally think if it's a campground, it needs to have bath facilities.
I do, I, I agree with you.
Yeah.
So the easiest thing to do is to just say, if you're, if you're submitting a site plan that says you're a campground under this ordinance, the ordinance says you have a bathhouse, and if it's redundant, then it's redundant and so be it.
I, I, I agree with that.
Okay, I mean, I'm.
I agree too. Because campgrounds are supposed to have, be a place also for travel trailers. So you're redefining it, saying this is no longer for travel trailers.
I think the simple, simple fix is just to require it on a campground to have, you know, an appropriate number of bathhouses based on the number of camp sites that you have.
I mean, I do think if you're doing an equation, you can make an adjustment in the equation. So if it is designed for, you know, one of the eco tents, then it's worth X. If it's designed.
They don't have to have a bathroom in the eco tent.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
If they choose, if they choose to have it, that's, that's their thing.
Sure. So they would, they would count it as a full one. But then if you have, say, a cabin that has a bathroom, that only counts as half. So whatever your total number is, for every 10 oc, for every 10 sites, you have to have a certain size bathhouse, you could adjust the equation based upon the apportionment of what's there.
But then you're right back, if you get ready to do that and you've got a bathroom in each fixed cabin, that's going to equate out the bath eyes.
Well, I think, I think if you just leave it.
But yeah, but it wouldn't.
To start with, just where you had to have it, based on the number of camp sites. One, it's going to not make it as desirable to have cabins that are fully functional with bathhouses, bathrooms and all that sort of stuff. And two, if they do, that's okay too, but you've still got to have that bathhouse.
Yeah, because if you have a camper cabin and it just has one bathroom in it and you've got six people in there, somebody's going to, there's, there's the shared use of the bathroom that's going to cause a conflict.
I think people are going to want to use the bathhouse anyway.
Yeah.
I agree.
Just because of the size of the, of the, of the facilities.
You could do something different.
Yeah.
And we base our lavatory facilities on per 20 sites. So that's.
Right.
You know, we didn't, we didn't say you got to have one for every five sites, one for every 10. We went to one for 20. So I don't think we need to start cutting back on that just because a cabin has a bathroom or something.
Yeah. And I think that they need to have a dump station too. I, I think that, I think it should be mandatory, have a bathhouse and have a dump station. And, you know, you know, going into it that you're calling yourself a campground, and that's what you got to do. It's that level of accountability. And, you know, I think we've made enough adjustments in the other aspects of the ordinance, and we're continuing to refine it, that these people that are trying to develop a campground that, that they're able to, to design it to fit their needs. But ultimately, we have to design an ordinance that fits all of unincorporated here county for today and for, you know, however far in the future we have to go. And so it doesn't need to be site-specific to Mr. Robbins or Mr. Thompson.
I have a question. This, if you go back to Mr. Thompson's case, where he already has a development like that, and he wants to go in, and he decides he wants to go in and put, you know, these camping cabins, you know, is that still a campground if he has nothing but camping cabins and he already has all this, all the things going on? That comes to me in my mind, a group development.
Yeah. That, that's what, that's what Buddy's been saying. It's, do we need to have that camp, that cap to where you just can't have the camper cabins? And
I, I.
The longer we talk about it, the more I think so, yeah.
If you were to be careful about it as a campground, there should be camping facilities where it's a transient person coming in for a weekend or two or three days, or, you know, a permanent, or permanent site where they're parking their camper for half the year where they're coming down there in the summertime.
So may, maybe that's the solution then, is that those mixed-use sites like that can't have camper cabins. They have to have the RV sites or the primitive campings.
You know, that's probably a good idea.
Because they're not the same thing.
Yeah, they're not the same thing.
And I'm even, I'd say, even, even if you're going to have camping cabins on a piece of property, you should still have travel trailer sites.
So what, yeah, that's the whole thing. What's the appropriate number?
That's, to me, you, you're crossing group development with a campground. If you don't have to have camping facilities for a tent or a travel trailer, and you're just allowed to go put camping cabins somewhere, that's not a, that's not a campground.
I, I agree. It shouldn't be comprised entirely.
What's the right number?
50%.
50%.
Okay. I think that's what I.
We all like.
I think originally, yeah.
Probably how that works, isn't it, guys? Huh?
Took us a while, we've come around.
I'm so glad you guys come around and see the things the way that I had originally written that 50% cap. And then I'm making a note about the mixed use. Okay, so obviously, we've got a lot of homework to do, and we're not at a point to where we can have a recommendation on anything tonight. But I think we've had some very, very productive conversation tonight that we were unable to have last month. And, um, and I'm getting all these emails from John Robbins that I got at 7:04, 7:06, and 7:12. And I honestly haven't been paying attention to that, and I apologize for that. But, um, I'll get with him and work his comments. And public comment is not designed to, to be part of the conversation with the planning board. But he's been talking to me about this. And his last comment was, is 50% cap is not going to work. So there you go.
50% cap is not going to work for who?
Him, I would.
For him?
Yeah. So anyway, I'll keep working on this. We'll schedule it for next month.
All right.
That's all that I have. I don't think I had anything else for the board.
Any other comments or questions on the travel trailer park ordinance? Any other business for the, the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Terry Gore, second by Michael Barr. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everybody.